Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 6th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Stand for silent meditation. Is there anyone to remember today?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to remember the family of Rose Boyer, who lost her husband recently. Rose, a former city clerk, longtime city employee. And I've known her husband for quite a while, as many of us in City Hall would like to have a moment of silence for that family. Thank you.
Moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, first of all, grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble in these chambers today. We ask that by the power of your Spirit, that you help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the residents of the city of Erie. We ask that you send your Spirit to comfort those who are in mourning. And we just ask that you pray a special blessing upon the kids as they return to school, that they may learn well, and that things may be peaceable in our hallways. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the August 16th city council meeting and bills for payment on September 8th and September 15th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
There was a little bit of a scheduling conflict on the first presentation, so that's going to be moved to October. We've got a presentation today from our planning department with Erin Carey regarding the Buffalo Road neighborhood plan.
Good morning. I do have some handouts as well.
Thank you.
Good morning. The paper that's being passed around is the same as the one on the screen. But I want to thank you all for the time this morning. This has been a long coming project, so we're excited to get it before you today and start talking about some of the priorities that have been discussed with our residents. We have worked very closely with our community partner, the Eastside Grassroots Coalition, which is a collaboration of the Urban Erie Development, Community Development Corporation, and the House of Mercy. We've been working on this for many years, and without their assistance in community outreach, and their existing community meetings and expertise on the neighborhood, our small little planning department could not have produced this document alone. So we want to thank Eastside Grassroots, Gary, Michelle, Veronica, Linda, and all the residents at those meetings, who helped us along in this process. So each of our neighborhood plans that the city has produced is focused on a few core areas. Those are listed on the sheet: demographics and vision, housing, infrastructure, crime and safety, and economic development. So I'll give you an overview of each of those areas today in the Buffalo Road neighborhood. And planning is a combination of conversation and data, and I think you'll see that reflected in the overview today. So first, what neighborhood are we talking about? Specifically, this is the planning area from Erie Refocus called Fairmont McClelland. And that is, today, we're calling it the Buffalo Road Neighborhood, just as a way, a more reflective name of the neighborhood, more recognizable corridor. And this area goes between the Bayfront Highway and Bird Drive, going west to east, and then the Bayfront Highway to East 12th Street, going south to north. This area is home to over 7,000 people between two different census tracts, Track 15 and 16, and you can see the demographic breakdown on the sheet I handed out. From these demographics, we can see some, we do some initial data review and conversations with our core team, and we see some themes emerging. So those are then encompassing the neighborhood vision, which for this area, we are, our neighborhood vision is building and growing the future. So I'll break down each of those components. Building represents the half of the neighborhood that is zoned as manufacturing or industrial. This represents a significant economic driver in the neighborhood and is important to the character of the neighborhood as well. Growing represents the abundance of home gardens that are growing food and flowers in this neighborhood. Students from the UE CDC participated in a training with planning staff to utilize GIS, Geographic Information Systems, in order to map where each of these gardens are. They learned to collect data and then map their results, and identified 90 home gardens in a small space between June Street and Downing Avenue. This is a great learning opportunity in technology for these students, but also eye-opening to see the amount of food that's being grown in such a small space in the neighborhood. And then finally, the future represents the high concentration of youth that live in this neighborhood. Of the over 7,000 residents, 45% are under the age of 18. This represents the highest concentration of young people within the city of Erie, and makes the centers like UE CDC and JFK even more important for the youth in this neighborhood. So once we have an overall view of the neighborhood, we start to look at other components of the neighborhood, including housing. To begin each neighborhood plan process, we look at the residential properties within each neighborhood, assess the overall condition from the outside of the property. In this neighborhood, we assessed over 2,000 houses, and you can see the breakdown of the condition in the pie chart, going from excellent to good condition, to average, to poor, and then ultimately to unsound, meaning that the properties are in such poor condition that they need to be either rehabbed or demolished immediately. In this neighborhood, we've identified 34 properties that are in need of intervention. Some of these properties are abandoned and can be moved to the blight process; others are currently occupied. For those occupied properties, code enforcement is working with them to find appropriate assistance. All 34 of these high priority properties have received at least a notice of violation from code enforcement; six have already been demolished, and three have already been privately rehabilitated. We also take a look at the overall neighborhood and prioritize improvements based off of data, existing assets like schools and parks, and high-need areas. So we identified three high priority areas for housing, including between Elm Street and the Bayfront Highway. This is an area of high need in terms of condition. Fairmont Parkway, this is an opportunity to secure an asset in the neighborhood where there's a boulevard and fairly good housing, excellent, good, average condition properties. And then also Buffalo Road, which is a highly traveled, highly visible corridor. Through the property condition report, we also identified six priority vacant lots, where there's currently overgrown grass and weeds, and where there's currently dumping of junk and debris occurring. So those are also being followed up on by code enforcement. This data is so important to prioritize city resources, to help us prioritize staff time, and then also to apply for additional funding for housing improvements, since we have these priority areas listed in a public document. The next section of the plan is infrastructure improvements, so this includes parks and streets. Our two major park projects identified through the plan include 18th and June, which is currently some vacant lots, and Roger Young Park. 18th and June is where McDaniel Run, which is the stream that runs through McCollum Park, opens up and runs between 19th and 18th Streets, northeast towards Franklin Avenue. This stream bank could provide an opportunity to clean water with a riparian buffer as the water finishes its journey towards Lake Erie. This technique is used at Cascade Creek on the west side, and is an effective method of beautifying and cleaning the natural landscape. There would be many partners in this project, since the lots were identified as a high priority, including the city, Groundwork Erie, Eastside Grassroots Coalition, Lake Erie Regional Conservancy, and the Housing Authority, just to name a few. Roger Young Park is also a high priority for improvements coming out of this plan. Residents were engaged in conversation at community meetings throughout the planning process. At these meetings, a soccer field was raised as a high priority for the youth in the neighborhood. Through the participatory budgeting process completed last fall, this desire for improvements and investments was echoed with the numerous votes for a soccer field, running track, and football field improvements that topped the list of the over 200 responses that we received just for Roger Young Park. These comments will be shared with the city's consultant for the Parks and Rec Plan that will be kicking off later this year. This will allow us to analyze funding sources and feasibility for projects listed as priorities for residents, as well as analyzing what makes sense in terms of investments when looking at the rest of the parks in the city. This plan is firm that we're committed to making investments in Roger Young, and looks to the residents of the neighborhood to tell us what these improvements should include. Other infrastructure improvements include streetscaping along Buffalo Road, sidewalk, crosswalk improvements, Fairmont Parkway with the addition of bike lanes, sidewalk improvements and tree trimming, and Broad Street, Downing Avenue, and Bird Drive with the addition of bike infrastructure, as listed in Act of Erie. These infrastructure projects gives planning and public works departments goals and priorities for the next five years, and gives us documents informed by the public to reference when discussing funding opportunities with grantors. The next section of the plan is economic development opportunities. These are identified with residents and include commercial facade improvements at Perry Plaza. This is a gateway into the neighborhood coming off of Elm Street. This plaza is the entrance point into the neighborhood and should reflect the character and vision for the neighborhood as well. Savakio Park, as many of you know, is on its way to housing additional jobs and production of food for the neighborhood at the Grow Erie facility that's planned for that area. And finally, Burton School has been identified as a historic and community asset that residents want to see reused as a productive community space that works alongside the vision for the neighborhood to build and grow the future. Each of these projects is highly supported by the neighborhood, but will require partnership across sectors, including from the city. Finally, we analyze crime and safety reports as a component of each planning process. We produce hotspot maps in collaboration with the police department. As discussed with residents, these areas, these hotspots, would benefit from participating in the camera registry project that the district attorney's office is coordinating. By registering cameras, police and law enforcement officials can more efficiently follow up on crimes committed in these hotspot areas. So we will work together with the Eastside Grassroots Coalition and the DA's office to get as many of these cameras on the registry as possible. So all of these recommendations are heavily informed by residents and data. This plan has been reviewed by our neighborhood core team of the Eastside Grassroots Coalition and residents at a public meeting earlier, a couple months ago. This plan has also been reviewed by the Planning Commission, who has recommended it to City Council for adoption. So I want to thank you for the time this morning. I know this has been a long process, a long time coming, and we look forward to next steps from City Council for adoption of the plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take those now.
I don't necessarily have a question. I just would like for council to get reports, whether it's quarterly or every six months, on the progress of the parks and recreation. There's a lot of planning going on, and I don't want anything to fall to the wayside because the community does use the parks and recreational areas during the spring, fall, and summer, and sometimes in the winter if the snow permits. So I want to make sure that the investment that we're putting towards this is actually what the community wants. So I definitely want to see the feedback as well. Thank you.
Can you remind me, how many vacant properties did you say there was?
We have 34 unsound properties. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're vacant. I think we identified around the same number of vacant properties as well, on top of the 34.
Like housing structure, 34 vacant houses?
Yeah, residential properties, yeah.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Okay. What percentage of the unsound properties are vacant as well?
I would have to look at that number. I know it's in the plan. I think my estimate was about half, a third to half, but I'll double check and let you know.
And is there a process for engaging with those residents who are currently living in an unsound property, and what does that look like?
Yeah, right now, it's through our code enforcement officer in this area. His name is Steve Yurkowitz, and he's worked really closely with us, going through this list of 34 properties. He visits each property, sends them a notice of violation. If we hear back from that resident, he works very closely with them to connect them to resources, either through the Redevelopment Authority. House of Mercy has some funding that's also available, so if they need help and they want to work with code enforcement, Steve is really good at helping them through the process to apply for funding.
Has there been any effort with the vacant properties to reach out to the owners about the vacant registration that we passed a few months ago?
Yes, so that is also a component of that list. So as we find vacant properties, letting them know about the process, getting them into the, if we don't hear a response, getting them either through vacant property registration, but definitely through the blighted property process as well.
Awesome.
I find it kind of interesting here that you talk about the soccer field, the running track, the football field, and you say 40 comments, 37 comments, 35 comments. I'd really like to see what those comments were.
Yeah.
What do the people really want there?
Right, yeah. We can share those results, yeah.
I would like to see that.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea which way they went with this? Because I know they fought for a long time to get two softball fields over there.
Those might have been emailed to us like a year, like a year ago. Yeah, we'd asked for that. We had that same, I think it was, you know, but we'd had it emailed to us in the raw day of data, but that was some time ago, because the whole survey was some time ago now.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can resend that, yeah.
I didn't know how recent this one was.
Is this like the fields and stuff like that at Roger Young Park? Is this something like you're going to try to put a new field in there, or is this like kind of fix up the ones that are there? What's the thought on that?
Yeah, so we're, as part of this plan, we're just recommending that through the Parks and Rec Plan, we have a consultant that will come on board in the next couple months, and they would be park and recreation professionals, so they could help us identify what's feasible for the area, the acreage that we have there, what's feasible for the amount of funding that we have available. We're committing to making improvements at Roger Young Park. We just need additional information to help us determine what is the most feasible for that location.
Mr. President, what inclusion is the Housing Authority involved?
So we have, so our partner of the Eastside Grassroots Coalition, Urban Erie Community Development Corporation, is a component of the Housing Authority. They attend those public meetings every month with our neighborhood, the Neighborhood Watch meetings there. So they've been getting updates about the plan. We met with them early on in the planning process to get their priorities. So they've been a constant partner in the planning process.
Thank you.
Can I ask you where Mr. Keyes' plan fits in with what you're doing? Or have you discussed it with them?
Yeah, so I think, like I said before, the plan, the planning consultant for the Parks Plan is going to help us be able to combine priorities that Mr. Keyes has with the priorities that the residents have in the neighborhoods, so that we can come up with a way forward that's feasible.
Okay. Are we looking towards what grants are we're able to apply for? Because we're a third-class city, we have access to parks and recreational funding that, as long as we're able to match certain things, we're able to qualify for it. So are we having people specifically look at that? I would love to take advantage of any.
And that's why the Park Plan is going to be super important, because once it's in, and this plan as well, the neighborhood plan, once it's in a planning document, that's what the state needs to see, so that we can actually go out and apply for this funding. Right now, when we've met with them, they're like, where's your plan? Have you talked to the people? We don't have that right now. So this plan is super important for that, and the Parks and Recreation Plan is going to be crucial in order to get us access to that funding through the state.
Lovely. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to commend you and your fellow coworkers on this. It is a very difficult process to go through and get the feedback and be intentional and be, you know, ensure everyone is at the table, and so it's exciting to see the progress of where it's going, especially with the impact, you know, it is really dire differences between Census Track 15 and Census Track 16, and we know the history of redlining in the neighborhood as well. So just commend you and the team for everything you're doing, and as much as we can be informed and have regular updates, I think all of us are interested in that.
Great, yeah, we can, we can do that. Thank you.
I'd just like to, thank you for the work you put in. I was at the Roger Young over the weekend, and there were football games all day, and there were people, you know, in the park, hundreds of people in the park. They also had an Eastside Festival going on, and one of the primary notes is that, you know, people were telling me, hey, we have nowhere to go to the bathroom. And, and too, you know, you know, it really is a substandard field that's there at this current time, and no place for the people to sit either. And I tell them, it breaks my heart, you know, when I ride through there and the people are sitting on the ground, you know, and so, so I salute you, and I also want to challenge you to, you know, let's make this better.
All right. Thank you for the time.
All right. Moving on to repository sales, do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Moving on to public comments, if you have comments to offer, you have five minutes. If you could state your name and address, you are welcome to come up to the podium for five minutes of public comment.
Morning, Council. My name is Jesse Tate, 501 Poplar Street, Erie, PA 16507. I'm coming here because I have concerns with how I've been treated over the past, since March of 2022, in reference to my landlord in the property that I live in. On February the 22nd, I mean, February the 28th, I got a text message from my landlord, which I had been in the property for 17 years, telling me it's sold. I immediately called him and said, okay, it's sold, so what's going on? He was like, oh, it's sold with everybody to remain intact. And I said, okay, cool. So the next day, my neighbor tells me, hey, there's an eviction notice on your door. And I'm like, eviction notice for what? Like, I've been here 17 years, never been laid, never had an issue. The proof is, for 17 years, my rent never changed. It stayed the same for 17 years. So the new landlord, which I didn't know, so I go outside and I'm saying, hey, what's going on? The previous landlord said that, why am I being evicted? He was like, well, that's my choice. I'm like, that's your choice, it's not a reason. I'm like, why am I being evicted? And he says to me, you people don't pay. And I'm like, did you talk to the last landlord? I pay all the time, been here longer than all the other individuals that you saw, that he leases to. So I was like, okay, well, why, I just, I just would like a reason. He was like, you have to be out in 30 days. And I said, sir, first of all, I'm on a workman's comp right now. I had a back and hip injury. It's impossible for me to move. I was like, is there any way that I can get some time? Because this was just thrust upon me. I got an email, I mean, a text message the 28th, and then I'm out, I got to be out by April 1st, and I'm injured at the time. I'm on a workman's comp, and I showed him the proof of it. And so he goes, well, everybody's gonna, I'm renovating, everybody's getting out, but nobody has been put out except me. Nobody has an eviction notice except me, not even the downstairs. Plus, I told him about I have no water in my sink. This is last March. Still, no water in my sink. My kids can't even come over to the house. Nothing's being done about it. I've contacted so many different entities, Human Relations for the Discrimination, NAACP, and just getting no help. So he took me to court, and the judge ruled in his favor, even though he changed the locks while I'm still in there, on the back door, didn't give me a key. He, um... He never fixed the water. I still don't have any water. Code enforcement came out last Tuesday and said, yeah, this is a violation. It's also a violation because your back stairway. I said, that's not my stuff, that's the downstairs thing. I can't even get, I tripped and fell trying to go to my, to wash clothes, because all of, and I have pictures, videos, and everything of it. Then they point to the lease, the judges, and I'm like, okay, what about the violation of the lease where I don't have any water, where he's changed locks, where he's done things to me that I know isn't right? I read really good, and I read this lease really well. And I just feel like that nothing's being done. I've done to, I've gone to everybody trying to get a resolution for this in a positive manner, and the door is constantly getting shut in my face, saying, oh, there's none you can, the lease is binding for two people, not just because you, you're a new landlord and your attorney is Attorney Philippi. Like, I've never seen anything like this before in my life, and I do this, and my job, my day job is helping individuals coming out of prison, getting their lives together, and I've never, ever experienced anything. He had no, he has no reason to, first of all, evict me and then lie to me saying, everybody's got to go when everybody else got new leases. I'm the only black guy, even downstairs. He was like, oh, they gotta be, they're going to be out by August. It's September of next year, and they're still down there violating. I have videos of them operating an auto repair shop. When he came there, he had a big dome he had built in the backyard. I have video of that, where he worked hammering all day long, just, just constant violations. I told the code enforcement that...
Mr. Tate, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. Tate shared the information with me. I forwarded that information to code enforcement. They did go out. It just sounds more like a legal situation.
Well, and there's some, there's some conversation now about how we address that from an ordinance standpoint as well, a little bit stronger than what we have.
Good morning, and thank you all for your time. My name's Anne Barato, and I live at 3023 Hazel Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16508. I'm just going to be speaking in regards to the current city ordinance, that is, it doesn't allow backyard chickens within city limits, and in regards to the notice that my husband and I received on August 21st to get rid of our chickens that we've now had for four years. I'm just going to be referring to a letter that I sent to the mayor, and I have copies for all of you after I'm done. I just, I'll move forward with saying, myself and my husband extend this letter in regards to the notice that we received on August 21st, 2023. This notice informed us that we are in violation of the Wild Farm Animal Ordinance that is currently in place. While this is a rule that's in place limiting households within city limits the ability to have backyard chickens, we write to express how this is not only an outdated rule, but how we see our chickens as more than wild animals. To whomever made this report, they may see our chickens as wild, but to us, we see them not only as our pets, but a food source to our family, friends, and community. Through proper food, shelter, water, and raising our chickens are just as domesticated as your everyday household cat or dog. They often circle our yard, as well as make their rounds like that of any house outside cat, two yards connecting. They never, never travel farther than a certain vicinity through the neighborhood and come right back. While one neighbor does not like them or has an issue, there are several neighbors, along with their children, who have come to love and grow accustomed to them being a presence within the neighborhood. Just last weekend, I had a couple of our neighbor's kids come to visit and say, we just love being here mainly because of the chickens and your cats. We wish we were a country like you and were able to have chickens too. There is also an educational piece that goes along with having them. When the children from our neighborhood come over to visit us and them, we teach them how and what to feed them and why, why we have ceramic eggs in the coop, how to collect the eggs, and how to appropriately store them, how to corral them when it's coop time. And doing all of this, for us, is comforting. It's coming, you know, coming home after a hard day's work and seeing them so anxious to see us, to see what treats we brought back for them, or just chickens scratching during their, during their free range time outside of the coop. Besides the atmosphere they create for ourselves and neighbors alike, they are very advantageous in providing not just ourselves eggs, but the community as well. A big reason behind why we have them is to support and help those in the community who love their eggs. Specifically around the period in which inflation of egg prices occurred, my husband and I saw this as an opportunity to help the community as much as we could so they wouldn't have to pay the prices of $4.25 a dozen on up. This was nearly three times the normal price. And while some people can afford this, there is a great many who cannot. So to help provide, so to help, we provided another option for them. Our question to this ordinance is, why is a farm, wild farm animal such as this that provides so much to so many in different ways seen as an animal to ban in cities? But gardens, which promote self-sufficiency as well as potbelly pigs? Um, how, how are those things permitted but these backyard chickens are not? For the neighbors that may not look so agreeingly upon chickens being a part of the neighborhood, there are ways to accommodate so everyone can live amicably amongst each other without giving up what they enjoy. My husband and I consider ourselves fairly easy people to get along with, talk to or compromise with. If this ordinance cannot indefinitely go away, why can't it be loosened up a bit? For the neighbor who doesn't want them near their property, couldn't the fence line be a quick solution to this problem? And we currently have a rooster, which I also think may be a deal breaker for some people. If that's truly, truly the case, then we would have no problem removing them if the noise is an issue. And as far as the amount of chickens, instead of stating we have to get rid of all of them, can't there be something a little less intrusive than this by lessening the amount allotted, such as four to six chickens per household for those who wish to have them? I'm a big advocate for education, natural food source and self-sufficiency, especially in a space where this is warranted but so very needed and wanted by many who have the same thought process as we do and backyard chickens themselves.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Hey, if you could email me, I have a draft ordinance I wouldn't mind running by you.
Okay. Um, am I able to pass along the copies of what I read from?
Monica will take it.
And I also have, um, signatures of neighbors and city council, well, not city council, but county council, um, member and neighborhood children that want to see them come back to the neighborhood.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
My name's Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street. I look forward to not having to give my address over the air anymore. Um, healthcare advocates are especially concerned about the more than 80,000 people, 44% who've lost Medicaid coverage, who could still be eligible for Medicaid but are being disenrolled from the program for paperwork-related reasons. Since the end of a COVID-era federal policy, more than 184 Pennsylvanians have lost their Medicaid coverage, according to state statistics. So I urge people who are on Medicaid to go to compass.paa.us and check that their contact information is correct because renewal is no longer automatic. And if you have been kicked off, you only have, you have 15 days to appeal. Children can be enrolled and shipped. Depending on income, there could be, um, a copay. September 23rd is the deadline for voter registration. I urge people to go to pa.vote.gov. I hope that's the right, um, vote.paa.gov and make sure that your contact information is correct, that your registration status is correct. You may think that you're just going to automatically get an absentee ballot, but you may not be. You, if you didn't apply each year, um, anyway, just go do that. Um, once again, I will, there's about $900,000 of police-related expenditures on the agenda. So I once again want to bring up the idea that contextualize traffic stops. Traffic stops for, um, for things like something hanging from your mirror or the light out or stuff like that, that those can be handled not by a traffic stop, but by taking a picture of the license and sending somebody a citation rather than risking some kind of unfortunate situation by having a traffic stop, which can be very dangerous as we unfortunately know. Ripfest. So here we are with another major opportunity that the city is not taking advantage of to have a hydration station, either the city or the water authority. I see there's somebody here from the water authority. Or the downtown partnership to have a hydration station to avoid the thousands of single-use plastic water bottles that are generated by these events. Also, we see temporary restrooms, which is a reminder that there are no restrooms in Perry Square, which is unfortunate and in my opinion ridiculous. I also see here the city's assistant solicitor. And we spoke last time about, um, an ordinance related to street closures during construction. Um, to date, nothing has moved forward. I know that the, uh, Leanne Palmerter says she's working on something. She has not been contacted by the assistant city solicitor. Neither has the public works director seen it appropriate to move that proposed ordinance forward. Um, it's been over three years, I believe, that the Catholic Church at, um, 10th and Stas has blocked the sidewalk where they could easily put in a sidewalk bypasses that Erie Downtown Development Corporation has done on State Street voluntarily. Um, if there was such an ordinance, there could be a fee that would cover the inspection process for these sidewalk closures. I'm also sorry to have to communicate to you that once again, the city's curb ramp contractor is failing to appropriately manage sidewalk closures. I've reported that and the ones that are reported are getting cited, but I'm not out everywhere. But if they're doing it in my neighborhood, they're probably doing it everywhere else. Um, I also remind you about the need for a traffic mitigation ordinance. If we have had a traffic mitigation on hand, if there is an IRC, that would be one instance where we'd want to be able to collect, um, to require different mitigation, um, efforts by the city. Baldwin Park, um, we would like to see that project meet its obligation to provide sidewalks. A lot of money was expended, city money, donated money to improve the pickleball, but nothing was done to improve the sidewalks or to mark off where there is, um, the cars block our pedestrian access to the park. Thank you.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Kathy Schoff and I live at 2437 East 43rd Street. I grew up, uh, right off of Bird Drive. So, um, what Erin Carey was talking about, um, is important to me. I used, uh, the parks at Roger Young and we played at Deal, et cetera. I'm actually here to talk about, um, parks and how important parks and recreation are. Um, I grew up, um, like I just mentioned, um, my mom took me to Burton Park too. And there was a pool there where you could run around and splash. But, um, as a parent, I raised my two daughters in the summertime. For 15 years, we had a club called SATS, Stay Active This Summer. And we spent one day a week going to various city parks in the Erie and Erie County area and enjoyed what free activities we could. People brought lunches and we stayed for hours. Um, I noticed McKinley Park doesn't have too many picnic tables. I think it has two. And I think maybe there was some vandalism there, but it could use some benches as well. Bayview Park is used all the time for birthday parties. Uh, my husband and I walked past there last Sunday and I love every weekend almost someone setting up for a birthday party there. And they have, uh, activities that they provide for themselves. Um, I myself, this summer, went to the various parks and enjoyed the concerts for the 814 days. And, uh, Mr. Keys is right. If you, uh, pass by the Roger Young Park Sunday morning at 10 o'clock, that entire area actually is filled with young football players and families. Uh, the parking is sort of mishmashed everywhere, um, on the grass and that because there really isn't, um, parking parking in that area. But it's definitely very well-used. I also enjoyed the Eight Great Tuesdays at Liberty Park and Perry Square with the Downtown Partnership Thursdays Music. Uh, if you are a music buff and a social person, Erie is definitely the place to be. And, uh, it was great having the Breeze Band play for their last concert. Actually, um, there's polka next week on Thursday. But, um, tonight, actually, at Gridley Park, the Gem City Band is playing at 6:30. So, uh, it's a wonderful time to, uh, go to Gridley Park as well. The ethnic festivals are wonderful and the Celebrate Erie is wonderful. The beach concerts are wonderful. It's just a great time in the summertime. But, um, unfortunately, summer's going to be coming to an end. And next week, those colder temperatures are going to be a rise or decreasing. So I hope that the, uh, city, the county, the human services will provide for the unsheltered people. And, uh, great parks need great restrooms. And, uh, you don't want to see people, uh, hiding behind a tree, um, trying to relieve themselves. So I just want to say thank you for the summer program for the kids. They, uh, had a great summer activities, tennis, golf, theater, arts. Um, the summer program is wonderful in Erie and I'm so glad that you, uh, released the money for that because if you did not release the money for that, there would not be a summer parks program. I was at Baldwin Park for lunch while I was at, um, Blessed Sacrament last week or so, two weeks ago. And, uh, those courts were definitely being used. Pickleball is definitely a big rage across the country now. But, uh, thank you again for all you do. Oh, National Night Out too was absolutely wonderful. See, there is like something to do every day. Have a great day. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Karen Chalinski, 620 Cascade, 16502. Uh, I would also like to talk about chickens. I would like Erie to change the zoning ordinance that currently states that no person within city limits shall keep or maintain chickens to one that will allow limited hen keeping within the city. So many other progressive cities have long permitted chicken raising like Washington DC, Atlanta, Miami, New York City, Chicago, Los Angeles, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh. I think backyard hens can be beneficial for individual families and the community as a whole. And since 10 of the 12 food deserts in Erie County are found in the city of Erie, allowing families to own hens provides them with a reliable and affordable, sustainable food source. And chickens would bring a consistent source of protein to Erie families without major supply chain concerns. And I also believe it would support a welcoming environment for new Americans whose heritage does include chicken keeping and bring Erie into alignment with other cities' efforts to revitalize their urban core. And one of the most fantastic benefits of chicken keeping, I think, is pest control because they eat, well, pretty much everything, but bugs especially, slugs, snails, tomato hornworms, grasshoppers, and they especially love ticks, including the ones that carry Lyme disease. And they'll also eat your table scraps, which definitely reduces food waste. And I'm, certainly there are many more benefits beyond what I've said, but I wanted to keep this brief in the interest of time. And, uh, I do not have Freda's experience up here, so, um, I wanted to be brief. And, and of course, I am proposing limits for chickens because we certainly can't have chickens running feral through the streets of Erie. I mean, not that that wouldn't be kind of cool, but I think that would disturb some people. And, uh, most cities will limit the number of hens to five or six. And of course, they have to be contained, coop, yard, run, fenced in, and, uh, absolutely no roosters. Um, you can, you can get eggs without a rooster. People ask me that all the time. How do you get eggs without a rooster? You can get eggs, they're just not fertilized. And it is only roosters that crow. And believe me, they do not just crow in the morning. It is an all-day affair. So absolutely no roosters. And, uh, I think that it would be a, a good thing for urban chicken keeping to, uh, to happen in Erie. And that's pretty much all I have to say. So I, I appreciate you listening. And I believe I'm Facebook friends with some of you. So if you have any questions about chicken keeping or urban chicken keeping, uh, please just let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, counsel. Name is Mal Heims. I live at 836 East 24th Street. Many of you already know me through your political aspects. I just want some fairness here. I've been fighting for this since, I'd say, 2015, when I was diagnosed with, uh, problems with diabetes. I try to keep it under control and take care of it. But however, as you can see, I'm a double amputee. I have a leg off below the knee and I have no toes on the other foot. Uh, I applied for handicap permit. And I'm going to mention names. I don't care if it's loud or not. Leanne Palmerter in the city engineer's office, she can't stand me. She says, you can't have one because I'm, I'm a single-family home and I got a driveway. Fine. Next door, he got one. He's a, a double-family home. He has nobody living upstairs. He lives downstairs. They got one. And I gave her a whole list of people that have got handicapped, so they don't even live in the house because their kids come pick them up because they're handicapped. They don't even own a car. And she says, I can't have one. I could fight all I want. I never got to be one in front of my house. So I just want some fairness here. And I talked to, the only one I got any, uh, I talked to several council members and they've gave me their, their thoughts on it. And I did what I was told to do. I started with the mayor, which was probably wrong. He can't stand me and I can't stand him, which I don't care. It'll never be, uh, Lou Tulio or Joyce Avakio or Joe Senate. Any of those guys and the traffic engineer, Jake Keneely, was here for years. I know him very well. They wouldn't put up with it. Just say, put damn sign up for the guy. That's all I'm asking. I know it's, I don't own a sign. Any handicap person can park there. And to top it off, this is a good one. I was fined $30. I had to, went to the grocery store. My significant other, by the way, is handicapped too, replacement hip. We can't, uh, it's better sometimes to park on the street and go into the, uh, house from the street in the driveway. You can see what, how I, problem I have here. I just want some fairness. If these other people, I can give another list of names and, uh, places that got handicap signs. None of my business, I was told. That's another thing. It's not in my business. I shouldn't be going around looking who's got handicap sign, who doesn't. That's baloney. It's my business. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a citizen. I'm tired of the crap, the double standards in this city. I could, I can go on. I'm not even going to go there. I'm, I'm a better person for that and that. As I understand, I've been monkeying around in politics since I was old enough to walk. My parents were very political with all the county and the city people. My parents were very political, with all the county and the city people. So I got to be very indoctrinated. I was in the school district for 40 years. And I still have a lot to do with a lot of things. People call me for stuff all the time and want to know stuff, because I seem to get the problem solved. I go to the right people to, excuse me, go to the right people to get it straightened around. I just, I'm just tired of it. I'm going to, I'm going to make it public. I don't care. I'm not hurting anybody's feelings. Do their damn job, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council File Number 16377, Official Ordinance 522023, An Ordinance Appropriating A Sum Of $27,450 From Unappropriated And Unanticipated Golf Fund Balance Providing For The Expenditure Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16377, and now known as Official File Ordinance 522023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 522023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16378, Official Ordinance 532023, An Ordinance Closing And Vacating The Portion Of The Alley Running South From 11th Street Between State Street And Peach Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16378, and now known as Official File Ordinance 532023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 532023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16379, An Ordinance Appropriating The Sum Of $10,000 From Unappropriated And Anticipated Revenue And Providing For The Expenditure Thereof. This is the federal forfeiture program, sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, that City, that Council File Ordinance Number 16379, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance 16379, by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File Number 16380, An Ordinance Of The City Council Of This City Of Erie, The City Determining To Incur Lease Rental Debt Evidence By The Guaranteed Revenue Bond And The Maximum Principal Amount Of $1,889,510 To Be Authorized And Issued By The City Water Authority In Connection With Construction, Alteration And Improvements To The Public Water Distribution Facilities In And About This City, Including But Not Limited To The Lead Service Line Replacement Project Phase III And Paying Related Costs, Fees And Expenses. Specifying The Realistic Useful Life Of The Project, Authorizing And Directing Appropriate Officials Of The City To Take Certain Actions And To Execute Certain Documents, Including A Guarantee Agreement Between The City As Guarantor And The Erie City Water Authority And The Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority Approving The Form Maximum Guaranteed Amounts And Sources Of Payment Of The Guarantee Agreement, Creating A Sinking Fund In Connection With Such Guarantee Obligations And Appointing A Sinking Fund Depository And Providing For The Repeal Of All Inconsistent Ordinances Or Parts Of Ordinances. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, Seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, The Council File Ordinance Number 16380, Haven't Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance 16380, by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File Number 16381, An Ordinance Appropriating The Sum Of $319,000 From Unappropriated And Anticipated Revenue And Providing For The Expenditure Thereof. This Is Patrol And Tactical Equipment, Sponsored By Ms. Faulkner, Seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, The Council File Ordinance Number 16381, Haven't Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 16381, by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File Number 16382, An Ordinance Appropriating The Sum Of $500,000 From Unappropriated And Anticipated Revenue And Providing For The Expenditure Thereof. This Is The Erie Youth Violence Prevention Grant, Sponsored By Ms. Faulkner, Seconded By Mr. Brzezinski, The Council File Ordinance Number 16382, Haven't Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance 16382, by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File Number 16383, An Ordinance Appropriating The Sum Of $91,272.72 From Unappropriated And Unanticipated Revenue For The Expenditure Thereof, The Contribution From The FEMA AFG Grant For An AED Machine, Thermal Image Camera, And Two Mobile Repeaters. Sponsored By Ms. Faulkner, Seconded By Mr. Brzezinski, The Council File Ordinance Number 16383, Haven't Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance 16383, by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
It's a move, Mr. President.
Any separations? I'll be separating number one. I'm the sponsor of that one, I'm pooling my sponsorship of it to pull it from the agenda.
I'd like to separate number five under new business.
Any other separations? Call for the vote.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero. Resolution Number One, Sponsored By Mr. Nelson, Seconded By Ms. Flores. Resolved By The Council Of The City Of Erie That Erie City Council Is Authorized And Directed To Approve Travel For Councilman Keys To Attend The Congressional Black Caucus Annual Legislative Conference In Washington, D.C. For Professional Development At A Cost Not To Exceed $3,000.
Oh, sorry, that's, that's going to be pooled.
Can I open for discussion?
Can I read it?
Oh.
Uh, resolved by the Council Of The City Of Erie That The Mayor And Other Appropriate Officials Are Hereby Authorize And Allocate Stormwater Management Fees To The Downtown Revitalization Streetscape Project To Be Used As Matching Funds For The Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Downtown Revitalization Streetscape Erie ME Number 173700 Grant. Discussion?
I just want to provide additional information to the public on this one. I received quite a few calls over the last two days asking why our new stormwater fees were going to this source. And so there was an additional memo on this, and I don't expect members of the public to necessarily read all of those, so want to provide this. This project will improve the water quality and decrease the discharge rate into Lake Erie from State Street. Catch basins are being installed and the water is being directed from underground soil cell areas with special soil to help trees grow and improve water quality. A soil cell is an underground plastic structure that holds a special soil mix with a high void space for water storage and treatment. The soil cells are projected to retain 25,000 gallons per rain event, and I have been assured that is pretty significant and absolutely worth the investment. This grant that it is being used to match requires the resolution showing the funds are available so that we can fund the overall project. So this is definitely a step in the right direction as to managing our stormwater and protecting us against future climate emergencies. Just want to ensure folks that those fees are going to exactly what they were designated for.
I'd actually, I literally pulled up the same thing to read it, just didn't know that's exactly what you're doing. Great. Also want to point out that earlier this week, it was brought to our attention that it was likely only going to be $150,000. So they're using, they're using the stormwater management very efficiently to make sure that we're getting the effects that we want, especially when you're looking at State Street where there's so much surface that is non-soil. I mean, everything's paved, there's a lot of density, sidewalks and such, so this is going to be vital for our management.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Any volunteers?
I'll go first.
All right, left to right.
All right. I attended the Erie Water Works Board Meeting on August 17th. What we were voting on today in terms of first reading, number two, the increase in the Penn Vest loans and grants, this is a very, very good thing. Some folks saw that Senator Casey was here last week on August 30th. I was, unfortunately, was out of town, so I missed that, but he was here to really honor and celebrate the fact that we are, we're making great progress on this project, essentially removing and replacing lead service lines. This will improve overall water infrastructure and drinking water quality. And after this next investment that we voted on for first reading today, it'll be at about 85% complete. So this is, this is definitely needed to uphold federal law and making good progress. Also, there will be an announcement coming soon on the new Water Works CEO. In terms of my other committees, I'm going to keep it pretty short. I have a lot to talk about with housing today. Tomorrow, I'll be doing an additional tour of more of the firehouses with the department leadership, so I can continue to learn more about the needs of the fire department. And then with the police department, I have my monthly meeting with the chief and other leadership this afternoon. I really want to turn to talking about housing, though. We had some public comments today about housing, and it's something that I know I get many calls on my council line about. I want to talk about three citizens that I've met with in the last two weeks or spoken to in an attempt to try to help them. One is a disabled Ukrainian refugee who's lived in the housing, who's lived in Housing Authority property for almost 30 years. She had nearly her entire garden, including many of her food sources, a veggie garden, completely destroyed. Went to visit her, still trying to get to the bottom of what is possible there, why this happened, without better notice. She's also working with the Human Relations Commission, but just absolutely soul-crushing. Another is a trans woman who's been denied shelter since becoming homeless two months ago. She has not been permitted to stay in any of our shelters simply because of her, her gender identity and sexual orientation. She is, is now in a crisis situation, and we have, we have to collectively do better. Another is a father and son being forced out of their condemned home with no other option and being forced out of it by the city. So I have been working on this with, with Vice President Flores, talking about what are actual solutions to our housing crisis in Erie. An Erie Land Bank study from March found that for every 100 families looking for affordable housing, only 30 can secure it. We had a special council meeting on July 19th since we were unable to have a housing subcommittee meeting where we talked about what are the issues facing folks who are housing insecure, who are homeless. That meeting was, was great to bring folks together, and I appreciate Vice President Flores for being there and being so involved in this. Evictions cause, and this is not an opinion of mine, this is well-documented, evictions cause large and persistent increased risk of becoming unhoused, decreased long-term housing stability, and higher emergency room usage. If you've talked to anyone or you have any family or friends who have been evicted, you know how difficult it is to rent again after being evicted, how difficult it is to become a homeowner after being evicted. It is, it is incredibly, incredibly challenging situation. And that's not to say that there should not be reasons to be evicted, that is not what I'm saying, but it does need to be controlled. In many states and localities across the country, landlords are not required to provide a reason for evicting a tenant at the end of a lease term or evicting a tenant without a lease. Pennsylvania's landlord and tenant laws say that you can be evicted if you don't pay rent, you don't live up to your end of the written or oral lease agreement, or the time for which you rented your dwelling is up and the landlord wants you to move. This is why I have been working for over four months now with local and statewide lawyers to try to put together what it, what would be a just cause eviction ordinance. I am happy to provide these to any member of the public. You can also email or call me for a copy of this. This is a great nine-page study from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, which I'll be giving to all my members of council. I've been mentioning this for meetings, but, for many meetings, and still finalizing the ordinance and what that looks like because I want as much public input as possible. I'm having additional meetings with some folks who have been previously evicted tonight at 5:30. I've met with various homeless advocates, folks who have been unhoused, landlords, it runs the whole gamut. So this is something that I am really hoping we can have here in Erie. Essentially, it says that evictions cannot happen for no reason, they must happen for a good cause that must be defined. Now, this is not something that is unheard of or particularly progressive. This is something that all of New Jersey has, all of New Hampshire has, all of California, Oregon, and Washington has, as well as many cities throughout New York State, like Albany, Beacon, Kingston, Poughkeepsie, places like Baltimore, Maryland, and St. Paul, Minnesota. It is truly a great law to both address the shortage of affordable housing, which we know that 70% of folks in Erie seeking affordable housing can't get it, and then it also stops homelessness before it happens. It's wonderful to see more and more work being done to serve folks when they already become homeless, but how do we prevent homelessness before it happens? It is, it is a big passion of mine to ensure that this gets passed. I, I have rented in the city for now three years, and it has been genuinely a harrowing experience compared to renting in Denver, Oakland, other big cities. I welcome any of my members of council, any members of public to reach out to me, phone, email, to talk more about this. I, I am, I am hoping by next meeting to have something to introduce, and if not then, then early October. But I want to be as intentional and methodical as possible to get as much feedback so that it is strong of a legislation as possible. It will include three core components. It will define the legal grounds for eviction. It will say exactly why you can be evicted in the city of Erie. It will place limits potentially on rent increases, and it can enhance, it can incre, it can enhance the written notice requirements. This is not anything that falls out of state law. Philadelphia has had a just cause eviction ordinance since 2018, and State College, theirs went into, went to, into effect on August 1st. So we would be the third in the state of Pennsylvania. So housing, very, very near and dear to my heart, and open to any questions after the meeting, as well as have these packets available for anyone interested. Thank you.
Mr. Troup.
Thank you so much. Tough act to follow, once again, man. Lucky I'm an entertainer, I know how to follow people. So I'd like to commend the Erie downtown and the mayor's office and all the venues around town that, as one of our citizens spoke of, one of our future colleagues spoke about all the great activities that are around town. I'm sure most of us enjoyed that. I was talking to a citizen I was talking to a citizen the other day, and they were talking about how much they enjoyed the movie nights with their families downtown, so that's, that's a positive. On another note, so like thank the Erie musicians, the art community for that. As you guys know, recently, Erie Musicians helped me in a big fundraiser that I do every year. With the money we raised, we were able to equip 350 kids with book bags filled with supplies from the money that was raised. And finally, just remember, you know, you guys know I work in schools, so remember the, remember our kids. First week went well where I work at, so just remember our youth, public, private schools. Remember the teachers and all the staff that work with them, keep them in your prayers. We know that the more we focus on our youth, that's going to cut down crime in the future. So I'm, I'm gonna leave you with a quote by Frederick Douglass. He says, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men in the future." So as a city, I think, I know the school district is a school district and, but I think what goes on in the schools should be more of our concern also, not just leave it up to the school district or whoever, it should be our major concern as a city because those kids are going to be our future and citizens in the future. So, thank you.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. Keys.
I'd just like to echo the sentiment of Councilmember Troop that, that school is back in session, school zones are enforced. It's still light out right now when the kids are going to school, but be cautious, cautious and conscious that there now are kids, you know, out there in the morning and in the afternoon that may or may not be paying attention, and so ask everyone to pay extra attention. Lot of the events that Ms. Schaff mentioned, I attended, and Erie is a great place when we have fair weather to get out and be among the, you know, the residents of Erie, including our heritage festivals. And so keep continuing, and we just want, you know, everyone to, you know, transition well into fall, and that's all.
Hello, everyone. I do have a committee report. I attended the EMTA meeting last month, well, last week, technically last month. It was on August 28th at 4:00 PM through Zoom, and we were reported on a funding issue, and one of our citizens was able to provide information that she's gathered to the executives and CEO of the board. Hopefully, we're able to get some funding secured in the future for the riding needs of the community. They sample piloted a grocery route from the West 26th Top location to the West 38th Street store for six weeks, and sadly, they only received six riders, and they took that route out. So that food desert is definitely still going to impact the residents there, and this county of Erie has over 20 food deserts, so that's an issue that we definitely need to address. Our citizens deserve and need affordable, healthy food options. We also have Wi-Fi available on our EMTA fixed routes buses, so that's good for the community to know if you need to hook up to the Wi-Fi during a route. We have a blighted property meeting next Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Those are through Zoom, so if you would like to attend, you would have to notify. Aaron Snippet's a great reference person for that, but he has a whole team who are on the blighted property, but those are community meetings. And then with September being here, September 15th through October 15th will be Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. I was notified that the city of Erie and the mayor's Latino and Hispanic Advisory Council along with Ella, which is the Erie Latino Leadership Association, will be hosting a fiesta in Perry Square on September 30th between 3:00 and 7:00 PM. So please mark your calendars. The mayor would be doing a press conference in regard to that on September 14th, so please just make sure you mark your calendars. We want a great show for the support of our diverse community members to show that we support all of our community members throughout the city. And they're going to have a car show, music, kid activities, food vendor, dance competition, and that will be pretty much all. And this weekend is Rib Fest, so please come down and support. That is going on between the 7th and the 10th, and that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Ms.
Yeah, Councilwoman Flores, do you think at the next meeting you might could ask the Blighted Property Review people if they could make a in-person component? Because it might be easier to get people to see what's going on in a lot of, you know, when, a lot of people will never get the Zoom link and will never attend in that way.
So you want them to do a presentation to us? Or just an update or report back or?
No, if they, like, if they could do an in-person component also, like maybe Zoom from council.
Okay.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yeah, I have a few things here. Piggybacking on Ms. Flores, I talked to Jeremy, and I was a little disappointed with the ridership for the talks thing, but I also talked to him about maybe it was the time of the year that we implemented it. Maybe we'll take a look at once the weather starts getting a little bit bad and try it again, but we cannot sustain a line with five people riding the bus. So the calls, the many, many calls that I received from the area evidently was, I don't know, but we listened to them, and Jeremy stepped up and, and gave them an opportunity. That's what we're all about. Second thing, I want to thank the Green Garden folks for not coming here and talking about their bike or no, no bike trail, whatever the heck that thing's supposed to be. I asked them to give me time to finally get to the bottom of this. I have a meeting with Ms. Krantz, who is the Pendot Project Coordinator, to get to the bottom of it and find out just what the heck is going on. In retrospect, the reason the Green Garden folks are as upset as they are is that they were told one thing early, and then it got reversed without any kind of communication. So they're believing in us that we're going to do the right thing, and I'm with them. So we're going to try to do the right thing, that's the bottom line. What else I wanted to, a guy that probably nobody even remembers anymore because he's been gone for so long, Jim Winarski. We had a very, very successful Zabawa. My wife, Sharon, and I took tickets, sold tickets for Zabawa. We broke a record Friday night, the best Friday night they've ever had there, not because we sold the tickets, but because so many people came, even though the weather was a little, not foreboding, but it was raining. People came out, it was a wonderful, wonderful thing. And the reason I bring up Jim Winarski is he very quietly bought a huge Polish flag and donated it to the Zabawa, and it hung there. He did it very nondescript, but I think people should know who he is. He's still here, even though he's with those county people now, but he, he did it on his own, he cares. I would like to put a request in with the administration to show us some cost-saving moves here by the next meeting so we can get an idea. I don't want to fight these fees again, but we've done everything but a green leaf fee, $12 to pick them up or something. We don't need fees when we're throwing all this money around here and there, unappropriated or whatever. I want to see where the cuts are. So we can, my biggest noise with the, the budget was trying to get as close to revenue and expenditure as we can get. I understand that 87% of the budget is salaries and things like that, but we got people stepping on each other, doing some things around here. If we don't see the cuts, we'll see them when we get into the budget session. That'd be the bottom line. And I don't want to quit with a negative, I'll just say Zabawa again because it was a wonderful weekend. Thank you, folks. Good night.
Thanks. Couple of things for the public on things coming up. We have a September 14th study session to go over rules of council, as one of the citizens to be heard had mentioned that they don't want to give their address anymore. That's one of the things that is set by ordinance and something we're going to be discussing as well as basically how council divides the responsibilities of council and the order of these meetings so that we might be as effective as possible. So, you know, as, as Mr. Brzezinski's talking about the effectiveness of how we administrate stuff with the budget and the executive branch, we're looking at ways for council to be more effective as well. We have a couple of the candidates for election on that that will also be at the study session so that we could start hitting the ground running as fast as we can in January. There's a few legislative thing, I don't remember what that note means. There's a few legislative things that we're looking at, as Councilwoman Faulkner had mentioned, just how, just cause housing. As many of the citizens to be heard brought up chickens. I had emailed one of them earlier when they approached me about some research that our clerk's office had done.
Talking chickens?
Yeah. Some of the, our, I'd already asked our clerk's office to research that in February, and then I just forgot about it. For chickens, bees, and goats, especially within our refugee community, goats end up becoming an issue too. I got a 40-page document of research on that that the clerk's office found for me. You want to get goats, two of them at a time, so they keep each other friends and they have a certain amount of space, but there's some considerations.
They eat a lot of grass.
As long as they cut the grass.
Right, they eat a lot of grass.
You see what the nuns are doing with them? Yeah, yeah. There's, there's some considerations, and the way it would use some of our vacant space in town. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of aspects that might be very beneficial. But, you know, as, as constituents recognize, roosters are loud. Nobody wants that, you know, so there's, yeah, there's, there's some considerations that we need to bring together, amount of space, what kind of enclosures, so they're not, you know, crossing the road for all the jokes that would entail. You like that one? And then we're looking at a pedestrian access ordinance and then Green Garden parking exceptions. We have a lot of stuff that's in the works that gets covered in our solicitor meetings and continued discussion. Last week was an exciting week. All of our federal people popped into town to take credit for all the appropriations. We had the US Senator Casey here talking about the water. Some of that was funding that we voted on today in correlation with that to remove lead from the water. We had Congressman Kelly here for the EMI site, looking at investment in removing some of our brown field. And it sounded like there may be some more opportunity for that, so I'm really looking forward to future development, looking at congressional appropriations for our city to remediate some of our brown field and reinvest in ourselves. One of the things I was talking to Kelly about is they were talking about the return on investment that we see with these brownfields. You know, as you drive by EMI and you see the amount of improvement that's occurred there and what you're going to see in the next 20 months, as exciting as it is, there was some suggestions that, you know, what kind of return on investment is it? You know, what's the value of that square footage with the amount of money poured into it? But I want to draw the attention to the amount of invest, the return on investment we get, not in the 600 block of West 12th, but looking at that as an anchor building, what that brings to the 7, 8, 9,000 blocks of West 12th. And if we could get future investment. I live on the 600 block of West 9th, so it's a one-way street heading westbound, so I have to drive by that EMI site every day. And when there was a fence holding up the bricks from keeping it, keeping it from falling into the street, that affects my property value. What's it do as a difference when I get a beautiful, you know, multi-use industrial space with a cool microbrewery with this great glass wall that Dave Brennan designed, right? What's that as far as curb appeal when you're driving onto 9th Street? You know, I'm looking forward to the way that that return on investment comes back to property values throughout the neighborhoods. So, you know, we need to take a very broad social approach to how we view the return on investments with these tax dollars coming back to our city. Got a couple other things to point out. I'll, I'll point this one out as some prior, I already pointed it out in caucus, as they talk about school being back in session, we had Lydia Nelson elected a class representative this morning, I'm pretty excited. Collegiate Academy, did Erie High do their, their votes today too? Well, student government votes are happening, so we're seeing the school year in full flush. A couple, I gave her all my old permits here, and she just crossed off Chuck Council and put Lydia. No, no, she didn't make any reference to me, that's, that's a, that's a political negative. After council meeting, there is Sons of Lake Erie meeting for their big annual fish fry. I encourage anyone that's tuned into the meeting to go check that out, it's always a great event. And the last thing I'm going to point out is that we got one meeting between now and then, but as everybody's discussing the, the cool music events that happen in the summer, kind of the final, final music event in the summer ends up being September 30th for Porch Fest in the West Bayfront neighborhood, a record number of acts in it, and the lineup's going to be unveiled in the next, by the end of the week. I can give that much of it, but it's looking like two dozen bands, pretty much everyone that applied, and if they forgot to apply, I didn't get them in. Mo. But it looks like about two dozen acts on various porches throughout the West Bayfront neighborhood. Great sponsors came in on that for a great community event. So that concludes my committee report. Do we have anything from you today? All right. And from the solicitor? And from the mayor's office, Renee?
I'll go quickly. So, yeah, lots, lots going on right now with Celebrate Erie all wrapped up. We're, we're resuming work on a lot of different initiatives and also grants. We are working to bring the CRIS Authority Board together to start working on their bylaws. The Solicitor's Office is working on the Articles of Incorporation with the Department of State. We're pursuing, we're onboarding our grants team and pursuing several large grants in collaboration with community partners that are, that have come about as a result of the federal infrastructure funding. I'll, I'll, I won't give details today, but just to say that we have several deadlines coming up mid-September, end of September, and beginning of October, so we're going to be very busy with those. We'll also be convening the Environmental Advisory Council soon. Jackie Spry, who's, you know, taken on the, as Director of Neighborhood, or Planning and Neighborhood Resources, will be serving as the official staff liaison to the EAC, and will be working with them on developing a climate action plan for the city. We also have been continuing our involvement with the Erie Supportive Housing Group, not only working on identifying locations for the permanent supportive housing complex, but also on scattered sites throughout the area and on shelter, issues of shelter for this coming winter. And then just kind of to wrap up, a couple things. Tomorrow's press conference will focus on Welcoming Week, which kicks off this Friday, and all the things that will be going on with that. Also, the Gary Sinise Foundation has provided a couple of grants to the Police Department and the Fire Department, and you may all be aware that on September 11th, he'll be coming here for an event at Liberty Park. Gates open at 6:00 PM. There's a band that goes on at 7:00 PM, and then the, the live, the Dan Band goes on from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. And then finally, as Councilwoman Flores mentioned, we've been meeting with the mayor's Hispanic-Latin Advisory Council regularly for the past several months, and they are working on an event with, with details to be shared very soon, as she mentioned, next Thursday, that will be the focus of the mayor's press conference on the 14th at 10:00 AM. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Mr. President, one second, I forgot something, I'm sorry. I see the fire chiefs over here. Can we do something with that sign in front of the Peach Street Firehouse? I have a few people asking why, I guess they're looking at how pretty Blitnikoff Field's going to be, and our sign is kind of deteriorating.
I don't think that, I know he was working on several different things. I'll see where he is on that.
I promised I would bring it up on air, so I almost forgot. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anything else for the give the order? With that, meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:33 AM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.